Oh, and we're live. Good evening, good evening, good evening. Welcome, welcome, welcome one and all. So, I did promise we were going to watch the Warwickshire scrutiny committee meeting. However, something else happened today. It was the Leicestershire full county council meeting today. So what do we are going to do instead? We're going to watch that instead because if you remember last time we watched the scrutiny committee meeting of Leicestershire, councillor Harrison got an absolute mauling, an absolute mauling by the Conservatives. And from what I've at least seen bits and pieces of it so far, that doesn't improve. Except there are at least some other Reform people that are well willing to jump in and at least make do some form of defence for him. What that might be, who can say? But we'll see what happens. Oh. But as always, good evening, good evening, good evening to all, to one and all. So let's start this off because this is always is going to be fun. It's always going to be fun when we've got a Leicestershire County Council meeting. Oh.
May and do in the service of this county as well as elected member or as officer be in accordance with your will and for the good of your people. Amen. A little bit of housekeeping. So the evacuation procedure. In the event of having to evacuate, officers will be able to advise members who have on three o'clock PM at St John the Baptist in Hugglesco, council's tributes at the annual remembrance service of the meeting of the council held on the 2nd of July 2025, copies of which have been circulated to members be taken as read, confirmed and signed. Mr Hamilton Gray, will you second?
Seconded, Mr Chairman.
Thank you so much. Agenda item number three, second seven minutes. I moved at the minutes of the meeting of the extraordinary council meeting held on the 30th of July 2025, copies of which have been circulated to members be taken as read, confirmed.
That was about flags. Do you remember that?
Seconded, Mr Chairman.
Agenda item number four, declarations of interest. I invite members who wish to do so to make declarations of interest in respect of items on the agenda for this meeting. I have been informed that Mr Orson and Mr Bailey wished to declare a non-registerable interest in the notion of motion on protecting rural communities from the impact of reckless tax reform. This is due to their agricultural land holdings and because of the potential financial implications of the reforms for them. Neither Mr Orson nor Mr Bailey are considered to have a disposable pecuniary interest in this motion as IHT relief is a matter that rests with central government, not the county council. However, given that the issue affects them and their businesses, their business more than just for interest.
Let's go on.
And vote on the matter on the grounds that this is in the public interest, Bailey, to allow them to take part in this. However, on this occasion approved a dispensation for both Mr Orson and Mr Bailey to allow them to take part in this discussion.
Still giving them approval.
Thank you. Agenda item number five, questions asked understanding order, seven paragraph one, two and five. The questions and replies set out in the order paper will be taken as read and entered into the minutes. I received notice of supplementary questions for Mr Bray, Mrs Taylor, Mr Orson and Mrs Bottomley. Mr Bray, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question A, please?
Yes, Chairman. And I thank the leader for his reply. He will recall that at the last meeting I said that we did support hold of a referendum, but as the government had already ruled it out, it was an empty gesture. But moving on, will he agree with me then that as this government does not have a mandate on local government reform, it is essential that they carry out a meaningful consultation? And more importantly, they pay more heed to the results than the former secretary state did to legal advice on a housing purchase?
I still can't believe there's people like worried about government reform.
With me that it is essential that the government carry out a meaningful consultation on local government reform.
A meaningful consultation? You've had over a year and a half to carry out a meaningful consultation.
Shall we move on? Okay. Okay.
How are we still, how are we still at this point where a lot of people, and mostly it's Reform people, like, how, how is government reform doing? What is going on? We'd spoke about this back in May. We spoke about this constantly back in May, Jesus Christ. It had been already on the agenda by that point for well over just about a year at that point. So they've had plenty of time that could have even, I don't know, maybe actually talked about it at the election, you know, maybe had a policy on it, you know, just an idea. But the idea that there's not been a meaningful consultation carried out is ridiculous. I'm sorry. Councils had plenty of time, plenty of time to do that and lots have. Yeah. Exactly. Councils all being consulted, give a deadline to submit the third option. Exactly. And good evening Vince. Good evening to everyone, by the way, joining us as well. It's the deadline is November, I believe. Yeah, that November is the deadline for this to be submitted. So they've got at this point less than, I think, a month to actually submit what they intend to do. But, you know, they've only been in power since May. I mean, how could you expect them to have got anything done since May? Surely, surely you'd have had at least some thoughts on that. But anyway, I could be here all day just bagging on them for the fact that they still haven't got this done at this point.
Mrs Taylor, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question B, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I thank the leader for his answer and just a point of clarity, really. He said the deputy leader, Mr Bowen, was elected by the Reform UK administration by elected members in May. Could he confirm if the current new deputy leader is also elected by the Reform UK administration this time? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr Harrison, would you like to respond?
Thank you. A very simple response.
Oh, yes, this is the, obviously they've had a change of deputy leaders since then.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Mr Orson, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question E, please?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. Just very quickly, if you'll allow me. I was presented with a petition on this matter just before the meeting. I've handed it to Democratic Services and I asked to you that it is handed to the correct board tomorrow. So thank you very much. But the question is, would councillor squires agree that those currently assessing their birth choices need certainty and the continual holding position of a decision being anticipated before January is becoming untenable? So given we are now approaching the halfway point in this pause, will he press the trust to be more open and concrete about their timeline for announcing their future plans for St Mary's? Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Orson. Mr Harrison, would you like to respond? Sorry, Mr Squires, sorry. I do apologise.
Yep, I believe that's about a hospital, I believe, maternity ward. Again, not 100% sure. This is the problem with local politics. There's so much going on. It's difficult to try and keep and remember at least all of it on top.
Thank you, Mr Orson. Well, I can confirm I'm already doing that and awaiting a reply.
Thank you, Mr Squires.
Oh, and of course Scott, a uni jackknife.
Would you like to ask your supplementary question to question I, I believe that is, or L, I can't remember.
Thank you. Thank you for the response. With two months until the deadline, we continue to hear only assurances rather than any concrete details on a potential proposal or how our consultation will actually take place. Isn't there now a real risk that residents will be denied a genuine opportunity to have their say? Can you set out when residents and members will see the concrete plans for engagement and how this will realistically fit within the very limited time left available? Thank you.
Yeah, lists is local government reform again. You've only, again, guys, they've only been in since May. How could they have been expected to do anything since May? I mean, it's like, you know, councillors actually have to do things. Yeah, honestly, when, when some of this government reform does come through, some of these councils are just going to be like, we never knew that was going to happen. We never expected that to happen. There's going to be all of a sudden a lot of shocked people on these, on these councils when the government reform stuff starts happening in November. But it's their own fault. It's their own fault. They have had months. They had an entire general election. Every single other party ran on this. Basically, this was their plan. This is what they intended to happen. Reform didn't even bother running on that. And when they were asked, oh, yeah, we just need a referendum. Jesus. Yep, exactly, Vince. When your only policies are flags, non-existent DEI jobs and potholes, they were bound to run into this wall. Oh, not only just this wall. They are the rats constantly running into every single maze wall there is. They're just bouncing off each one. See what his answer is to this.
Already been asked, I'm informed. So we'll move on.
Oh, so he's not even going to bother answering the question. Great.
Mrs Bottomley, would you like to ask your supplementary question to question K, please?
Thank you. And thank you for the response. While we are repeatedly assured that actions are being taken in the absence of the section 19 flooding report, myself, parish councils, flood wardens and residents have no details as to what these actions are. Can we please have some clarity around what steps will be taken and when by to ensure that communities are fully informed and can track progress while we await the report? Thank you.
Oh, wow. Getting rid of your flood committee really was a good idea then. Okay, gee. What a, what a surprise. What a surprise that residents in Leicestershire, a county that is very regularly flooded and will probably most likely experience flooding probably within the next couple of months, unfortunately. Is it any wonder that they are worried? And the fact that this council, the first thing, one of the first things this council did was get rid of the flood committee. Fantastic idea, guys. Fantastic idea.
Thank you, Mrs Bottomley. Who's the question to? Mr Tilbury, would you like to respond?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you, Councillor Bottomley. Interim action plan of the section 19s will be revealed in the next couple of weeks, mid October. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Tilbury. Agenda item number six, to receive position statements from members of the cabinet. I will now invite the leader to make a statement. When the leader has finished his statement, I'll invite members to speak. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand and I will then call you to speak. I will invite Mr Meyer, Mr Mahaney and Mrs Taylor as leaders of the opposition to speak last before the leader's right of reply.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is it, Vince. They honestly don't understand, I think, what they've done in getting rid of these flood committees. Pretty much every Reform council that had a flood committee got rid of one. And I think they don't understand the fact how, how, how an important issue this is going to be, the fact that you can't just have it farm the way under the environmental committee board and expect not only all the other concerns of the committee to be discussed, but flooding itself. And it's a big topic that affects a lot of areas increasingly. So yeah, what a smart idea, getting rid of your flood committee, guys. A A plus idea. A plus idea, Jesus. Anyway, let's see what Harrison's going to say on this because he's going to get questioned again on his on his, shall we say, putting all those eggs in the hope, in the hope that that audit, that outside audit, that's going to be the saving grace of Leicestershire. And they're going to have less than three weeks to audit an entire council. Good luck. Good luck. Ah, Bailey, Darren, good evening. Good evening, Ollie. Is this where Dan Harrison has now have another meltdown when being held to account again? Oh, yes. Oh, yes, Darren. We're about to see this yet again happen. Remember, this just, this council meeting happened literally today. So, yeah, this is as fresh, as fresh can be when it comes to council meetings.
Mr Harrison.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman. Before I start my comments this afternoon, I'd just like to make comments about the leadership of the Conservative Party. I've been shocked and astonished with the attitude.
Oh, no.
Chase down two young men, which hopefully is all going to be vindicated. And I just thought it was absolutely awful. The behaviour is just relentless. I've been in politics for many, many years and I've never known such attacks and behaviour from an opposition. It just doesn't happen. They're more normally courteous, they're thought out, or you want to inquire, you'd find out. But this is public pillory of two young guys and I just think it's absolutely shocking. And I also think that your behaviour as the people who ran this council for many years, who was in charge of all this debt that I'm going to refer to.
Excuse me, Dan, can you talk to me, please, rather than?
Oh, sorry.
Excuse me, is this just a personal attack or is that his position statement?
Yeah. What? God. What a, what a, what a victim. What a, what a victim, ladies and gentlemen. Someone give that guy a gold medal for his victimhood. This meeting already going to be pretty spicy. I think you can see, I think you can see things are going to be fun. Things are going to be very fun indeed.
Thank you. So I will move on now. But I can't just hide the disquiet and the concern and worries of many people.
Right. Wait. He starts off, he starts off with a personal attack and then goes, oh, well, sorry, I can't hide the disquiet and discomfort of many people. I am sorry, what on earth? What on earth is this? Oh, we are, we are dining well tonight. We are dining well tonight on this. Oh dear. We're, oh dear, oh me.
I, Mr Chairman, I don't tend to read my position statement verbatim. It's printed entirely on the order paper, so I will be selected in my copy. MT of S, MTF. Former acting leader of the council left us in dire straits. They presided over 24 years of failure. We inherited 90 million pounds black hole in the revenue budget, 80 million pound shortfall in capital budget and 65 million
That's right, blame the last administration.
Desfit. Let's not forget who the lead member for the department was.
What are you going to do about it?
Under the Tory control. Being in charge was about slashing services, increasing council tax massively, with no plan to tackle the decisions needed to be addressed. That all changed in May this year when reform was swept into power.
And what have they done since May? Like, what have they done since May? They've done nothing. They've done nothing but argue about flags and just have the most performative time of their lives on this council. And all Harrison can do now is just attack the opposition. Yes, he's attacking Conservatives and, you know, I love a good Conservative attack, but in many respects to these Conservatives, they had ideas, they had policy. Yeah, sure, you could disagree and you could argue about that policy that you may or may not like it, but at least they had policy you could argue about. How effective was it being? What was it doing for the constituency? Harrison has put forward nothing, nothing. And yet he's complaining about a record of a past administration that had all these policies that they did over the years. And what has he done since May? We're in September, he's done nothing. And remember, he's got a budget, he's got a budget he has to put before his cabinet in December that then has to be voted on and approved to go then to a full council meeting and then voted on again to go to more committees that then are ready for February when it goes into budget season properly for most councils. He is still not ready, still has not produced anything. Time's ticking. Why, oh, he's waiting on the auditors. The fact that this guy is waiting on auditors in the hopes that these auditors are going to come and somehow and save him, it's pathetic. It's absolutely pathetic.
To control 10 county councils outright and the largest group infer the three including Leicestershire. That means a change of the guard and new ways of doing things. It is reform UK councils who are rolling up their sleeves and tackling the financial mess that they inherited from the Tories.
But what are they doing? Oh, yeah. Fair point, Vince. And administration, he was part of.
Is well underway. I, to see how we can change the ways of working and deliver real savings for local taxpayers. We've saved 2 million by attacking flooding and improving resilience. Over half a million pounds saved in dimming lights. Over 1 million savings a year reviewing adult and social care procurement. Employment Committee recently approved plans to commence consultation with staff unions on productive, on a productive our teams can be when working together. And my cabinet is 25,000 less expensive than Mrs Taylor's cabinet. Local government reorganisation. There is more details in my printed statement on the order paper, but I wish to place on record my gratitude to officers who've worked tirelessly to try and make sense of this government's drive for LGR and devolution. In the remaining two tier areas, I should also add that I've attended events organised by Leicestershire Business Voice, East Midlands Chamber of Chamber, attended by the city mayor and the lead for the seven district councils, councils and Rutland Pit Onut, as well as the residents and business community to have a say.
Very true, yeah. When did they give these mental patients the keys to the asylum? Very true indeed. Very true indeed. He can, he can crow and he can blame the Conservatives all they want, but they had policy. They had actual policy, they had ideas of what they wanted to do. And as I said, you can agree, you can disagree with that policy. But what have Reform got? Nothing. How, how are they going to do things different? They're doing literally nothing different except, oh, yeah, we're going to do these investigations, we're going to do these little reports. It's nothing. They, they, they went in expecting they can cut and slash and find all these different savings. The savings he's mentioned are absolutely minimal to what some of these councils need to actually make savings on. Minimal. It's pathetic and he can't even take responsibility. He's the guy in charge now. He's the one who's got to make all the decisions. He's the one who's going to all do all this. Instead, oh, I'm just going to blame the, the, the past confirmed administration and not just blame them, attack them. And as Vince has pointed out, it was an administration he was part of. He was part of the Tory group. So he is not blameless. He is not blameless in any of this. But we are going to see, we're going to see very, very soon. We are going to see very, very soon potentially a council go into some potential bad problems because of this. I think Leicester is not going to produce a budget on time. If they don't produce a budget on time, then it'll be their fault. It'll be Harrison's fault. Because you cannot just rely on an, on an outside external audit that's only going to have three weeks to do this external audit of the entire council. And then sometimes, somehow that'll produce, show them where they need to make all these savings and cuts. Because they are going to make cuts somewhere. He's, he'll, he'll be claiming at a moment it was, this is just has, oh, but all that he's Conservatives, they made all these cuts. We're probably about to see them make all these cuts as well. Can't wait to see how they're going to spin that next year.
The recent county council decisions have been more about majority of members do not support. We now wait for the financial modelling and the difference and the options, particularly to give us the information for more informed debate on the consequences of the county of an expanded city. I've given very serious undert-
You had, had so long to be able to do that. You've had so long to be able to do that and now you're only doing it now. The deadline is in November. Good luck.
... that members of this council will have their say. I will meet the deadline of the 28th of November for final submission with the group leaders. Agree a timetable for decision making. Meeting with staff representatives. Yesterday, along with deputy leader and Mr Squires, I had a positive meeting with the representatives from the staff network. There's more detail in my printed statement on this, but we do recognise the importance of staff wellbeing and the respect is vital to productivity.
I have to say, that meeting is not recorded, I don't think in any way, shape or form, but God, I would love to see that. I would love to see that. Like generally, I would absolutely love to see what the staff have got to say in that meeting and what their representatives are saying in that meeting.
I propose that we meet on a regular basis, which was agreed, and I look forward to those productive relationships.
Oh, I bet.
His Majesty's Lord Lieutenant of Leicestershire. Finally, it was indeed a pleasure to meet Mike Capor, who recently met with members of the cabinet, the county council chairman, to discuss his role as he is representative of the monarch in the county. I'm proud of our traditions in Leicestershire, was delighted that we had the Lord Lieutenant, who is top notch and dedicated to his duties and public services and residents and communities of this county. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr Harrison.
And now we get the opposition response.
Thank you, Chair. Just a point of clarification where you say that highway-
Thank you, Chair. Just a point of clarification, uh, where you say that highways have saved five hundred and forty thousand pound. That's not under your watch though, that's, that was under the previous administration's watch. When I was cabinet member, we started that project, so just a point of clarification, thank you.
Love it. You've got to love the fact that this is happening on a lot of Reform councils. That some people from the previous administration, they're still there. And then whether they go, hold, hold, hold on, you're making this amount of saving, um, that's not you who did that project, that was us. I did that, I did that project, I'm not allowing you to take any credit for that. So good on that person for, for stopping him from taking credit on that. I, good, good on him for doing that. Yeah, this is literally the meme, the guy shooting the other guy in the back of the head, except they're both the same person. Very much so. But anyway, yes, we are now for the, uh, opposition, um, rebuttal. So if you'll give me a second, I'm going to go grab myself a drink and then we'll continue with this, um, nonsense, because honestly, it's going to be good. Excellent, we're back. Right. Let's get back into this. So, uh, opposition rebuttals. I have a very strangely, and the Conservative one is going to be quite fun, quite fun to watch indeed.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the leader for his position statement at long last. Um, but also I'd like to thank him for his little outburst that he's just had accusing the leadership on this side of, uh, bullying. Um, quite interesting that a couple of weeks ago, when all this was kicking off, I actually had a meeting with Mr. Bowman in private, when Mr. Bowman informed me that he in fact was being bullied by the leader. Now, I offered him some advice, unfortunately, he didn't take that advice, instead he chose party unity, um, which is something, you know, loyalty.
Oh, oh, oh. Well. Well, that's interesting now, isn't it? That's very interesting now that the, the former deputy leader who had bullying accusations apparently against him has now apparently said to this guy, the leader was bullying him. Well, 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 yet another interesting twist and turn on that, on that saga. What a, what a twist. As M Night Shyamalan would say, I've got to, I've got to get a soundboard at some point and, and load up on some of these things. I've, I've got to, I've got to do that at some point. Because at the moment, I've only got things like this, where I can just go, welcome. Because we've just had, uh, Aidwich, good evening to you. Welcome to you, welcome to everyone else watching as well, by the way. Uh, welcome to this Leicestershire Towny Council Cabinet meeting. Um, but we are going to once again watch councillor Dan Harrison absolutely crash out on this. Um, and if you haven't just heard what, um, the, uh, the councillor has just said here, uh, in fact, uh, what is it, Craig Smith? He has just put forward that the ex-deputy leader uh, came to him and said that the current council leader, Dan Harrison, was bullying him. Interesting that, isn't it? Interesting, um, news on that front. Very interesting, that's taken a turn on that one for sure. But anyway, let's see what other revelations we get on this, but oh my.
Advice, unfortunately, he didn't take that advice, instead he chose party unity, um, which is something, you know, loyalty to your party, perhaps the leader could learn from the deputy leader on that one. But I'll leave that one there. Um, I'm actually more interested in some of the statements that the leader made. Bold statements about what you've been doing since May last, uh, this year, sorry. Uh, specifically like the new flags policy, which is actually a minor change, a rehash of the policy that we put in this side of the house, uh, but room, sorry, um, a few months back. Um, also as well, the external support that you're now seeking, that was quite worrying because surely that's going to cost millions, if not tens of millions of pounds.
Yep.
Uh, sure, if it works, fantastic, we're all for saving money. That's why we were the most efficient county council for a number of years, despite being the lowest funded.
That's very true.
But you've actually said that it's not, they're not going to come into place till the end of October. Now, bearing in mind that your budget needs to go to cabinet in December, that doesn't leave them very, very long at all to get something in place. Also, when we go on to the items that you've individually bullet pointed, adult social care, one million pound saving, well, we did that.
Yeah.
As my colleague, Mr. O'Shea said, the highways team, uh, with the diminutive.
Taking credit for things they didn't do.
Again, we did that, I actually voted with it, um, uh, twelve months ago, I think it was, yeah. So we voted that in over twelve months ago, so we did that as well. The children and family services aiming.
Yeah, exactly, exactly Darren. What a, what a counter punch, what a counter punch. Bear in mind, bear in mind, these might be Conservatives, but a- as I said, if Reform, even, even if they are, you know, Conservatives, if Reform are taking credit for stuff that they did when then, then, when they were in the administration in Leicestershire, um, then by all rights, absolutely lay into them. Tell them, hey, that's not your proposal, that's not your project, that's not your achievement, that's ours. You know? Really show them, really shows what, they've done nothing, they've done absolutely nothing since May. They've done absolutely nothing. This is what happens when you get in a Reform council. They've just absolutely disaster.
Save eight hundred thousand? Well, I'm sure Mrs. Taylor will have her own comments on that one, but I think you'll find we also did that. So, and also I'd like to thank very much the lead member for highways because since May, he's managed to finish the MMDR. You know, the project that's been going on for years and years and years, obviously going out with his high vest, his vest and his hat on, it spurred the guys on and they've managed to get everything over the line in just a few months, so well done on that. What we're actually seeing here, Mr. Chairman, is pure fantasy. It's like the equivalent of joining the pub quiz team at the last minute, answering one question out of fifty and then demanding that you pick up the trophy at the end.
Ooh.
Now, of course.
Ooh, ooh. The like, the, the, being on the pub key, pub team, only answering one question out of fifty and then demanding the trophy at the end. Yeah, um. Oof, that are definitely quite a counter punch. Smack, wham, right in the kisser on that one. Oh, oh. Someone called the police because that was definitely, definitely a murder on that one.
Last minute, answering one question out of fifty and then demanding that you pick up the trophy at the end. Now, of course, on your previous, uh, pub quiz team, the leader actually got thrown out. Hopefully, the Reform Arms pub quiz team might get you a little bit longer, but I doubt it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Chapman, please.
Thank you, Chair.
I just noticed, Dan, here you mentioned the, what's it, the county records office. Four years we've been working on moving that records office to this site just over here. Do you know what the holdup is? It's not this county council, it's your good friend over the border, the mayor of the city council who keeps stopping it. The reason we haven't moved it is because separating the two collections would cost that much money, we'd have no reserves left in this county council, so that's why it still is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, that's something I don't know about, that's something I don't know about. This is again the problem when you go to local politics, so much stuff is going on, it's a mini Westminster. And you've got to keep an eye on like six hundred, it's almost physically impossible, but yeah. Don't surprise me that, of course, that there's more shenanigans going on, uh, with, uh, other Reform people across county borders, uh, on that one. Would, does not surprise me that there's stuff going on like that.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Mr. Crook.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just wondering if the opposition are going to be so keen to say we did that when we start talking about the budget and the deficits. As the leader has indicated in his statement, the financial situation this administration.
You know what? They did something, they're doing stuff. You don't get to talk until you actually do stuff. Until you actually do stuff or put forward proposals, you don't get to say nothing about that. You don't get to say nothing about that until it's done. Oh, there Darren, yeah, if this was a boxing match, Reform would have thrown in the towel, or they would have. Yeah, all across the, the country, Reform councils are claiming work for previous councils, yeah, because they've got nothing else to, to, to prove that they're doing any work, so they're claiming anything they can, but even then, that's now running out by like this type, well, in a couple of months' time, some of that stuff is going to run out. They're going to have very little, little to claim. Do you, can I just, can I do absolutely nothing and get loads of money I don't deserve? Well, be a Reform UK councillor. I'm sure they'll accept you, the vetting process is very stringent. I can't, I can't even say that with a straight face.
Strait inherited was a total mess. Working with officers and a united team of Reform UK members, we're working out ways to stay to the ship, improve the finances, make savings where we can and implement the agenda on which we were elected. Over three million of savings already achieved with a plan in place to implement better procurement, better commissioning, better efficiencies and better ways of working. Contrast this, the twenty four years of the Tory failure, maximum council tax and reduced services. It's no wonder the public voted for change back in May. As an administration, we're working hard with officers to get this council into a position where we could submit an agreed LGR plan to the government by their November deadline. It's important that we analyse the financial modelling of the various.
You've had months to do that and you've only now doing it. You've had months to do that, you're only now doing that. Good luck, good luck submitting it by that deadline.
Three options so that this council can have an informed debate about the most important decision this council have made since the last round of reorganisation back in nineteen seventy four. I fully support this statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crook. Mr. Bray, please.
Yes, Chairman, I wasn't going to speak, but I do want to just make some comments on, on what's been said about, uh, age, it was ages in positions that they hold and I am slightly uncomfortable with some of the comments that I've heard on this, I just want to just say through your chair to some of the people involved that I was the youngest councillor in the country when I was first elected to, to Higley Bosworth Council and quite a number of similar comments were made about me and, um, well, let's put it this way, I saw most of them off, I'm still here and most of them are not. Um, so I would just urge caution on anybody who thinks that just because you are young, you may not be effective. Um, and I would just like to say that I will certainly, and my group will be certainly judging people on their performance and their achievements or lack of them, rather than on their age. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Comments, Mr. Bray. Uh, Mr. King, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Um, so I'm not going to go over, you'll be pleased to know, Mr. Harrison, overall ground that other people have done. Um, but a couple of weeks.
You'll remember this guy from the, uh, scrutiny committee meeting, I have a feeling that might be about to come up again.
Go at scrutiny commission, uh, we asked you about what your plan for, uh, meeting the deficit and the deficit at Leicestershire County Council is not a secret, it had been, uh, publicised, you were part of the group, Conservative Group, ruling group until, uh, uh, May this year, sorry, February this year, sorry, uh, when you left. Um, and, um, look, we know that that black hole has been there for a while, but in the interim, we say two hundred and ninety million pounds, uh, mainly because the government told us we had to do those things. We also were told we had to increase council tax, the government assumed we did that. Now, at the scrutiny commission, and one or two colleagues who were there will recall, I described your approach as bonkers economics. And nothing I've heard today convinces me anything more, anything different, that what you're proposing is bonkers economics.
I need to speak to this guy. I need to track down Phil King, I need to speak to him.
And, um.
I have a feeling that will be interesting conversation.
Ninety million black hole and yet you're trumpeting a twenty five thousand cabinet saving. That is a smidgen, an absolute piece of dust compared to what's required. Um, you, uh, hold up your new flags policy as an achievement. Do you really think most of the residents, the people who are receiving adult social care or SEND support actually care about what your flags policy is for the courtyard where no one can see the flag? Um, on reorganisation, you say that you reacconise the city mayor will make his submission. And I'm sure he will, he's, he's been very clear about that. But you're waving the white flag before the fight has even begun. Why are we conceding ground to the city instead of standing up for Leicestershire? And finally, you praise the workforce. Um, but then in the same position statement, you're undermining, and you're potentially undermining them by talking about rigid office diktats and, and blaming them for things. So if staff are valued, why don't you trust them instead of lecturing them? And, Mr. Chairman, these are questions that residents want answered. They don't want the spin, they don't want the attacks on people's integrity and professionalism. They don't want slogans, we don't need more expensive consultants. Um, there are serious challenges, they require serious leadership and unfortunately, you're not offering it and only we on this side are able to, uh, provide it. Thank you.
Uh. Don't care he's a Conservative, good for him. Uh, literally laying it all out that this administration in Leicestershire at the moment, led by Reform, is going to be an absolute disaster zone. Good on him for saying it out and laying it out in such a very, very nice, clear and concise way, quite frankly, on that front.
Thank you, Mr. King. Uh, Mr. Bowen first, please.
Thank you, Chair, I just wanted to respond to Mr.
Oh, here he is, the ex, the ex-leader.
Smith's comments and say, I don't think anyone could really care less about your petty gossiping across the chamber. I want to be abundantly clear, Reform is not divided in any way, shape or form.
Really? Then why did you leave? What's, what's the real reason?
The leader is most certainly not a bully, we're a strong group that debates openly and.
Then why did you tell him that he was a bully? Just what?
Any serious team should, but when it comes to delivering for residents, we stand together as one. The opposition might want to invent rifts when non-exist, but while they play politics, we're focused on fixing the roads, tackling waste and delivering for Leicestershire. That's what matters to the public.
And none of that has happened.
Public, not playground gossip. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, why did you leave? What's the real reason why he left? Why has he not done any public statements since then? Why has he not been allowed to, uh, to do anything since then? I believe, uh, he has been put in a box. He's also been investigated for his little ice cream shenanigans as well, which I also might be think the reason why they got rid of him. But it's quite weird that you had that Conservative pop up and say, you came to me, you told me your leader was bullying you. Yeah, doesn't sound convincing at all. Doesn't sound convincing at all. I think there is still more to this story. I don't know whether we'll ever hear, like, the full story of what went on. The real reason why he was given the boots. But I'll, I'll tell you now, we ain't got the full story. We still do not have the full story of what went on there.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Uh, Mr. Poland, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you very much, Leader, for your position statement. Uh, the leader talks in the position statement about the historic failings of political leadership at this county council. Since twenty ten, the last little administration led by Nick Rushton for more than a decade had saved two hundred and ninety million pounds. That, that is in the context of Leicestershire being the lowest funded county council in the country. But despite this, despite that, in twenty twenty four, we were still performing so well that the children and family services were judged outstanding and the highways and transport department were judged third out of thirty one upper tier authorities, uh, for overall performance in twenty twenty four. First question, if the leader, uh, believes Nick Rushton and his administration were such poor leaders, why did he support the administration for just two months short of eight years, which is very nearly the same amount of time that I myself did? Secondly, in the position statement, the leader identifies a number of savings in development. I recognise a lot of them because they started when we were in, in control.
Yeah, again, haul it out when they're taking credit.
Can actually achieve those savings, uh, that comes to two hundred, two million, three hundred and sixty five thousand pounds. Given Reform's commitment, which is said in the, in the election and has been repeated numerous times since, that council tax will be lowered in the forthcoming budget. Um, we will still need to find, um, that will cost twelve million pounds, we've been told by officers.
Yep. How, how are they going to find all that money to be able to lower council tax? Is Dan Harrison going to pull a mini Liz Truss in Leicestershire? I think he might very well, depending what happens, but oh boy. Oh, that could be, get very, very interesting on that front if they don't produce a balanced budget.
So can the leader give us some idea how we are going to find the nine million or six hundred and thirty five thousand pounds difference between what the savings are outlined and what the freezing council tax. and what the freezing council tax will cost to balance the budget for just this year? Thank you.
So, yeah, all in all, so far, it's not, he's getting a mauling. Once again, not only just Harrison, but the entire Reform group here are getting an absolute mauling. There is just, this is, this is just a one-sided slaughter, quite frankly. This is just a one-sided slaughter. And yet people still think Reform are good administrators, that they are good governors. I'm sorry, Reform keep improving as we keep uncovering on this channel. They couldn't govern themselves out of a paper bag. It's disastrous and it is only now a matter of time, I think, before stuff starts going wrong. And I think it is all going to start with these budgets. Because this is the first time in their council careers that they actually have to make decisions and they have to make some very important decisions. And then they're going to be responsible for those decisions. How then do they respond to those? Well, if you've seen what's happened in Nottingham recently, probably not very well. That's for sure with Mick Barton. But anyway, before we continue, I'm just going to have a little BRB and we'll see you in a moment. Oh, anywhere back. To be fair, they would claim the paper bag had too much red tape wrapping it. Well, probably very soon. Very, 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 very true indeed on that. But greetings, greetings, greetings to everyone joining us, by the way. We are watching today's Leicestershire County Council meeting. And at the moment, we are pretty much witnessing a absolute one-sided floor mopping of the Reform UK councillor here. Dan Harrison is taking an absolute bruising, just as he did in the last committee meeting. It is not going well for them on that, on this front. Yeah, gonna have to make some really tough decisions, white or red. Very true. Anyway, let's see what we've got next on this.
Thank you so much, Mr. Poland. Mrs. Bottomley, please.
Thank you. I just want to echo what's previously been said, particularly in reference to the leader supporting the previous administration. It's a bit baffling to stand here now and give us a very lengthy and detailed position statement against everything previously supported. I'm also quite concerned about what's missing from this position statement. After a lot of debates and a lot of discussions and a lot of questions in the section about local government reorganisation, it doesn't mention a public consultation at all, which, you know, we've been assured is going to happen. And I'm just concerned that it's been left out and that our residents are not going to have their voices heard on this really important topic. Thank you.
They're not. Let's, let's face it, they're not. You've got until, what, the end of November? Public consultation, is it possible to do a public consultation in what, less than a month? I don't think so. I don't think it is possible to do a public consultation on this, on the, on the local government reform within that time period. But what should be really asking, just to, you know, dig the grave a little deeper for Harrison. Why has this consultation not taken place sooner? It's a valid point. Why did he not bring this up at the election? Point out the fact that every single other person that was running during the local election pretty much had an opinion on what was going to happen on local government reform because they all knew it was happening. They all knew what was going on, going to go on. And yet every single Reform council, this isn't going to go well. So we're going to have some fun in November, when the deadline comes up for local government reform. And then we're going to go into budget season and we're going to see what happens there. But make no mistake, we've got a very, very busy couple of months coming up for Reform disaster news that's going to take place, that's for sure.
Right, Mr. Bottomley. Right, Mr. Charlesworth, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to echo Mr. Bray's point about young people. In recent weeks, the younger members of this council have been attacked in a way I find quite appalling. They're entitled to be here as much as everybody else. If you're aged 18, you're entitled to be in office. Everybody aged 18 and above is entitled to be here. We need, over the years, we've said we need more diversity in this chamber. Yet the minute we get the one group in here that we've been lacking over previous years, we attack them. I'm not defending Reform or its council.
Because they've put them into positions of power. Sorry, I don't think any other group on that council, I don't think any other group on that council would put 18-year-olds into positions of power, into top line cabinet positions, namely adult social care and child and like send services and child social care. I don't think any other council group would do that. That's the problem everyone has had. I've even said it before on this channel. I don't mind the fact that they're 18 by all means. But giving them big, very senior cabinet roles where you've got to actually know what you're doing, you've got to know what you're talking about. That's weird. That's very weird to do.
And so it's policies. I'm defending the right of every 18-year-old to be in this chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Charlesworth. Okay, I'm going to move on now to Mr. Meyer, please.
Cheers. Thank you, Chairman, and well done to Charlesworth and Mr. Bray. I echo those sentiments about age. Let's turn to the position statement. Mr. Harrison, a lot's been said about you being a member of the Conservative Party until February this year, when obviously you've moved over to Reform. To be fair, you know, Reform or Conservative, I think you, you, the situation this council finds itself is down to people like yourself who voted Conservative in 2010 onwards and gave this council austerity and the black hole that you refer to now as consequence of that. So, you know, you reap what you sow, as they say. Now we've got a Labour government and I think it's positive. And I think, and I think for the finances, you might laugh, but I think for the finances, it's potentially about six or six and a half percent more this settlement coming forward. So when we're talking about finances, yes, you laughed, but six and a half percent more. And when you were a Conservative and you were banging on about fairer funding, actually, it seems the Labour government is providing fairer funding for a, as I was going to say.
Yeah, true point.
Reform County Council. Send, yes, we all know send has got a black hole. And I can't believe you put this in this position statement to say that it's a black hole. In essence, it isn't a black hole. It just needs funding by central government. We are doing send and anybody listening into this, please be reassured. If you're applied, we will assess it and you will get the funding that you rightly deserve. There's not a black hole of search. It's just the way that it's going to be funded. And there shouldn't be a political football's end. Young children and their parents need to know and have reassurance in the county council that we will deliver for them as well. But I think that's enough on the MTFS because we're going to have the budget and Mrs. Smith is correct, you know, there's only a few months left for the budget and how we're going to balance it with a council tax cut potentially. That's only for us to find out. Notable achievement since May, there's only two things that are notable. One was the flag policy, it's already mentioned. And the other one, you cut £2 million from net zero to move into the flooding, which you're going to mention further on and some projects will come. You know, it's, it's, you know, is that a major policy change? Who knows? It's one of those to come. But actually, in the five months, have you done anything that I can point to say that the reform have made a difference of the way the county council is running? Not really, no, not yet. So we will be, you know, worthwhile finding out what those policies are in the months ahead. At local government reorganisation, I think we, again, this is something that you could have led on and you haven't led on. The districts have consulted and they know their position. The city is consulting and it knows its position. The only other authority is Leicestershire.
Why do, again, why do all these other councils that know that the local government reform is happening? How come they've got all this sorted out? How come they, as he's brightly pointed out, they've got all their positions? Why hasn't Reform? Oh, that's right, because they didn't care. They could thought, they could just ignore it and the local government reforms would just not happen. It's not how it works. It's happening. They can't stop it.
We haven't consulted with any of our residents. We as members around this chamber don't know what the proposal is going to be or whatever proposal we're going to give. We're giving promises that we're modelling and we're going to know what the modelling is and we're going to look at that one. But we're at the end of September. In October, it has to get through cabinet and in November it has to be submitted. Time's running out. I don't know when we're going to consult with our residents. And if we are going to consult with our residents, as Mrs. Bottomley said, it might be like a week or a few days. And I don't think that's a proper consultation. And I think we should be consulting with the whole of Leicestershire because it is important that we do that. And on the other points as well with the staff, I think this is important. I was at a hustings with Mr. Harrison where he actually blamed the overspending county council on the staff payroll. So if I was staff and their representatives, I'll be worried about what's coming down the road. And I think saying this.
Oh, that's, hmm. Yeah, fair point, fair point. Bring that up more. Bring that up more, please. Because that's something I didn't know, that he was at a hustings blaming their financial position on the, on the budget, on the payroll budget of the council. Gee, I wonder if, I wonder if anyone's going to take a pay cut this year and find, suddenly find out about it. Hmm.
So if I was staff and their representatives, I'll be worried about what's coming down the road. And I think saying this and saying that you've got cordial relationship, that's a start. But I think it's more than, more reassurances needed to our staff because obviously if you think you're going to be cutting council tax and balancing the books at the same time, there's only one line, one major line that you're going to be doing it from. And if I was a staff at Leicestershire County Council, I would be worried going into business.
Thanks so much, Mr. Meyer. Before I continue with the group leaders speaking, I'd just like to ask Mr. Grimley if he'd like to speak.
Thanks. Just a couple of quick points. Hate to have to keep reminding Mr. Mayor of how badly the Labour, last Labour government left the country in dire straits. It was really dire straits, well, the verge of a Greek-style bankruptcy or bail out from wherever. So that's a position, you know, that he left or his.
Never was going to happen. There was not going to be a Greek-style bankruptcy. That's ridiculous, but fair enough.
After he left the country in. But I do agree with Mr. Mayor on the reorganisation issue. We are just miles behind the curve. We've had these, you know, the district councils, they were out with their consultations months ago. The city council have been out with their consultation. And when is our consultation going to go? Nobody really knows. It's just, you know, we, I said this last, I think the last full council, we need some action, we need proper action to get this moving a bit because I was concerned. We've not really seen anything. We do need to see something on that. We are just behind everybody else on this in the, in Leicestershire. So can you please get, you know, some proper action and get this moving now?
Yeah, exactly. Just, just blame, just blame, just blame the Blair government, you know. Yeah, I, I've said this before on many occasions, but honestly, Brown and Darling during the financial crisis did such a good job, like steering us through that. Really, they did such a good job. I think they take a lot of blame and then people blame them for stuff. Sure, I'm sure you could say they did things wrong, but in a crisis like that, that we haven't seen for years, I think they did a pretty good job. I think they did a pretty good job. And then we won't need to conservative government who immediately went austerity. Austerity, austerity, austerity. Because if we cut money and we don't spend money, somehow magic happens. But there you go. I don't know what magic they're expecting to happen, but we are now living with the consequences of that austerity magic.
Thank you, Mr. Grimley. Okay, thanks to the group leaders. Mr. Malaney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the MTFS, clearly the council is, as we know, in a challenging financial situation. However, we have a responsibility to ensure that essential public services are protected from any cutbacks. The state's roads, pavements, public transport, education, social care are all essential to residents. We had nearly a quarter of a century of Conservative rule at Leicestershire and many of our services were run down, not least because the last Conservative County Council and Conservative MPs failed to get over all those years, fair funding from their government that meant that we were placed at the bottom of the league for funding and our services have suffered that way. So I will say that going forward, the Liberal Democrat, we're obviously going to have discussions on budgets and so on, but the Liberal Democrat Group would not support any heavy cutbacks to public services that have already been cut back to the bone over the years and are essential services that need to continue and be delivered at a quality level for the residents of Leicestershire. On the flags policy, I won't get into a long discussion on that beyond saying I was disappointed that the administration turned down a request to fly the Ukrainian flag on the country's independence day on August 24th. We flied it in Hinkley and we also had a very well-attended event in Hinkley for the local Ukrainian community to recognise the situation that their country is in. And given the existential crisis that Ukraine faces and provoked invasion by an authoritarian regime, it's a shame we couldn't carry out a simple act of solidarity to the suffering people.
Yep. Again, you just, I've said this since the very beginning, the whole flag policy, regardless whichever council they're doing it, is completely performative. It's ridiculous. And if you look where some of these flag poles are actually located, in the case of Leicester, they're not even actually outside of the council building. It's sort of like inside in the courtyard. No one can actually see the flags from the outside of the building. Yeah, but again, he brings up a good point. Why didn't you allow the Ukrainian flag to be flown on the, you know, independence day, you know, shows us solidarity? What, what problem do you actually have with flying the Ukrainian flag and showing solidarity with the Ukrainian people with the crisis that their country, country is currently going through? Bring that up to them. Again, every single time, bring it up to them.
People in Ukraine by flying that flag. Local government reorganisation, we believe it's unnecessary and we've said so. Sadly, the government is determined to push it through relentlessly. If it has to happen, our two points of principle, as we have repeatedly stated, are to oppose one authority for the whole of Leicestershire and to oppose city expansion. We await to see what the financial modelling says about the different options. However, I would say that there are other points of principle apart from that on this issue to do with.
Good evening, Billy.
And local government remaining local and not distant and not remote from the local communities that it represents. And we still hold that a single authority for Leicestershire would undermine those principles of local government being local and that's why we would continue to oppose it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malaney. Mrs. Taylor, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Just a couple of points to address before I actually go into the position statement. I think.
This is going to be good. This is going to be very good. This, I believe, was the person who was also chair of the scrutiny committee meeting. She is probably about to absolutely lay into Harrison for his statement. Snip back, grab your popcorn because this is about to be get, be very good.
Think when someone resorts to insults and bullying and attack on a person's character, rather than just addressing their differences, these are people that normally resort to that behaviour when they feel out of their depth, unable to show a lack of reasoned argument or lack of emotional intelligence. So I think the leader needs to look at his own behaviour. I have never said in this chamber that young councillors shouldn't be in this chamber, but they should be nurtured and supported, not thrown under the bus. I've championed young people for the whole of the seven years I was involved in the children and families portfolio and supported many young people move successfully into adulthood. So I take no lectures from anyone in this chamber. Mr. Quick Advisor, they've already saved £3 million worth of savings. I haven't seen any of that evidence. I'd be interested if the leader could explain that to me. And are those savings showing in the budget? Because the budget's currently £8.1 million overspent so far since May. Or would it have been £11 million overspent if they hadn't made those savings? I'd be interested in where those £3 million savings have been made. So on to the position statement, or would I rather call it a rant? I think the first sentence, the financial challenge that local government faces is well documented, has been going on for several years. It's not just Leicestershire, this is across all county councillors that are experiencing extreme demand on their services, mainly social.
Can I just say so far, excellent response. Excellent response.
For adults and children. So it leaves us very little else to juggle with. And, you know, the leader's there, but he was part of that administration for so many years, especially under the leadership of his son-in-law. So, you know, he's condemning his son-in-law for the leadership that he did. Sorry, father-in-law. So, you know, we've all been mentioned the 290 million we've saved since 2010. Well, I hardly call that tinkering. So I'm not sure what else has got to be cut. And obviously, you know, Reform has said they're doing it differently. That's great. I look forward to a council tax reduction when my bill comes through, my ball steps announced on the mat come April. I think it's already mentioned about the records office, vital storage for us. Yes, I completely agree with you. There was a plan in place, several plans in place, but Leicester City have refused to give us the money to move forward. And you're well aware of that, or you should be. So to put in there that there was no plan is just a total lie. Bowmanner left adrift. You could say that. I would call it that we were looking at different options because it's really important to the people of Leicestershire. You haven't saved it yet. You've gone out for consultation. I don't know what your plans are going forward, but let's see what happens. You haven't saved it yet. You've gone out for consultation. I don't know what your plans are going forward, but let's see what happens there. So I'll be interested to see how you do that. Yeah, the CQC judgment on adult social care was really disappointed. I was really disappointed with that. I'm not going to stand here and defend it. But I know the team are working really hard now to bring that back. And it was just the waiting list. If you actually read the report, it reads like a good rating, not a required improvement. The only reason it was required improvement because of the waiting list, which is down to resources, which we haven't got enough staff here to deal with what we need to.
Can I just say, I love it when you get good councillors like this. They know what they're doing. They know what they're talking about. This is, this is brutal. We are pretty much watching an evisceration of Harrison here. I doubt he's going to have any response to this.
Skeletons in the closet. I'm not sure what that's about, but I'm sure there's plenty in some of your closets that might fall out at some point or another. No special achievements, so.
Oh, that's kind of rich for Harrison to say that. Oh, yeah, I know where all the conservative skeletons in the closet are. To which she's now just replied, well, we know where all your skeletons are. They'll probably fall out at some point as well. Wow. And who says council meetings cannot be fun?
New flag flying policy took two cabinet meetings because you called an emergency cabinet meeting, then got called in by the group leaders. The indicative cost of those two cabinet meetings and the scrutiny commission meeting were six K. So you've actually cost taxpayers six K by doing your flag flying policy, just to fly a Union Jack in this quadrant that, like James said, no one else can actually see. Your report from the employment committee, I actually subbed on that committee, which was very interesting. And I think I will take more of a notice that employment committee. And I advise the leaders to do the same. So you're going out to consult with staff about making sure that they're back in the office 50% of the time. So I look forward to that consultation with staff about how they feel about and whether we lose really good members of staff because, you know, due to family or their personal reasons, aren't I?
Yeah, force them all back to work, force them all back into the office. I do not understand what reforms drive is about this. I just don't get it. But I don't know. I don't know what their argument about this. All this is, oh, we need to make sure they're back in office. Well, they've been proving for quite some time since 2020 that they can work from home quite effectively. But no, drive them back into the office and potentially lose them. Good work on that reform. I've said, I think maybe in a couple of years' time, there's going to be a crisis in local government for recruitment. I think there is. I think reform on some of these councils are just absolutely setting this up to tee that off. I think they're absolutely setting up for a big crisis in local government recruitment for this.
I will come to the office 50% of the time. And the two million pounds that you moved, so it wasn't saved, it was moved from one budget line to another. It's not new manual savings. It's just moved to a different budget line. I don't really think you can declain that.
That's true.
And then on to the, all the claims that you make about adult social care, the one million pounds of savings, that's a targeted opportunity model that we did as the Conservatives in the previous administration. The highways team, the 540 was energy savings that was really eighteen month trials that we did as Conservatives under Aussies. You didn't do that. The children and family services that you saved over eight hundred thousand pounds was brought in by me, not you, us and the Conservative Party. And it's, you know, you've said about cabinet, you've saved 25K. Well, that's brilliant, but you're not actually doing the work that you need to do is the problem. Members are not turning up to meetings. You took me off the Loughborough Town Deal where I was a good representative for this county council. And the person you put on there didn't turn up at the meeting. There's a fire authority meeting that your members didn't turn up. So you might well have saved money, but they're not representing our residents. And as for the.
Reform, reform councillors not turning up for meetings. Imagine, imagine my shock that reform councillors are not turning up for meetings. Shock, horror, say it isn't so. Yeah, Deborah here, she's doing an absolute bang up job. This is, someone called the police. This is, this is a murder.
The fire authority meeting that your members didn't turn up. So you might well have saved money, but they're not representing our residents. And as for the melting Moby distributer, I mean, that is just unbelievable that you think you can claim that. Absolutely unbelievable. We did that as we did the A511. So you can carry on, but it's all there in the public domain, all the cabinet meetings, all the meetings that took place. The Conservative administration did that. You didn't. Local government rage, I'd say till I'm doing the face to you and you don't take any notice. We are still waiting. We should be out for a public consultation. We should have been out months ago, but you haven't done anything apart from telling me it's all in hand. I'll be able to share with you soon. I'm having meetings. You're not doing anything and we're running out of time. This needs to be submitted in November. And the public of Leicestershire have not had their say because you are delaying and drifting and you need to sort this out. And I'll just finally end with the staff network representatives. You finally had the meeting that we asked for four months ago. Took you four months to meet with the staff groups. That's ridiculous. But I'm glad you've met with them and I hope you'll continue having a good relation because without our staff, this council is nothing.
Can I just say, what a statement. I've said this before, don't care, don't care that she's a Conservative, but quite frankly, ripping into reform for doing an absolutely awful job on local councils after basically running an entire election campaign on saying how fantastic and wonderful they were going to be once they got into office. Good on, good on Deborah there for absolutely ripping him, ripping him a new one. It's more than well deserved on that one. More than well deserved, to be honest. Personally impersonated, good evening to you. We should give them all pies and watch a pie fight, if only, if only. Yeah, very true, Vince. That's something else. Yeah, reform central of all advertised jobs to work from home. Yeah, absolutely. Complete, absolutely hypocrisy on that.
Taylor, Mr. Harrison, would you like to add a few things?
Be delighted.
Oh, and now he responds. Let's see, let's see how many times he can refer to himself as the victim in all this.
Mr. Harrison, would you like to add a few things?
Be delighted. What misinformation? I agreed after that meeting with the staff, I agreed straight away to meet with them and I've had to wait till this week. Not me. I was happy to do so. So let's get that point right. I think I think the problem with your group and your perception, you've done things, but not enough. You haven't done anything really to grab it and deal with the problem.
Dan, sorry, could you speak to the chair, please?
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, okay. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm much prefer, actually. I never thought to that. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So they talk about what they've done in little bits here and there. That's good. I accept that.
Yes, because they've done a lot more than you and you're claiming credit for things that they've done while meanwhile putting forward no policy while making a big song and dance that you're going to do things differently. But how are you going to do things differently when you've put no policy ideas forward? It is pathetic. He is flailing. And I have to wonder, how long is Harrison going to remain as leader of this council? Is someone else from this Conservative group going to give him, going to give him the push? I think someone might, honestly.
But on our amendment, I wanted a programme to save 72 million and I got 10 out of 31 votes. So I know they're not prepared to change. Something has to be done. You can't keep doing the same thing over and over again.
What, Harrison? What are you going to do?
To affect that debt. So something has to be done. I wouldn't say dramatic, but it's highly professional and it will be well worth all the effort and it's important. We have to do something different. We can't carry on with the same old whinge, this, that, we're doing this, we've saved money. You're only as good as your last game. We're out today, we've got debt, we've got to get on with it. You know, you're telling me what you've saved over the years. I'm aware of that. We have lots of things, but I'm also aware the people of Leicestershire are looking to us to create change and we will create change.
What change? What are you going to do?
It will be rewarded. We will get the efficiency we need and obviously be able to affect our budgets because that's critical. Because you cannot run a business with these sorts of debt. And what did their budget say? Five percent, here we go, terrific. And we'll cut a few services. That's been the mantra for years. They won't change. It's the same.
But what are you going to do?
Themselves out with such great virtue of different things and achievements. They have, it's good, but it's gone. Here's today. This debt is real. It has to be answered and we and I are intending to answer that. We will be doing things. There's already starts across the country where other people have had innovations. But I believe the sort of people we want in are the people who have their experience and the depth of knowledge and the skills and the staff to be able to carry this out correctly and effectively. Now, there's laughter. We're all wondering six months, 12 months time, I wonder what the laughter will be when we're achieving things, we're doing things and it will happen.
Good. At least you've been doing something in 12 months' time.
That they get up on their feet and apologise when we show them what we can do and we're determined to do it. Remember, we've come in, we've had five months to build a cabinet, get people up to speed. Six months ago, they were just sitting having a drink with their pals. I'll put my hand up for that. So it's been a massive change. And I'm proud of what we've done, what I've been able to do to help move.
But you've done nothing in those five months. The excuse was, oh, that they just knew they need to get up to speed. Local government reform was known about even well before the elections. And as has been pointed out, every single other area where this is happening to them, they're all out, they're doing consultations or they've already done consultations. I'm sorry, this is absolutely pathetic. I don't know how long he's going to remain in this position because honestly, this is an absolutely weak leader. I think the only reason he is there is because he's an ex-conservative. And I think how long before someone says in this group he needs to go is a bit embarrassing. Because he keeps on being absolutely mauled to pieces and his responses to those maulings are, oh, help, I'm being, being held to account. Help me, I'm being held to account. This is insane. This is insane. I don't think this guy lasts very long. I don't see how much longer he can last. And if he doesn't put forward a budget in December to the cabinet, well, Leicester, 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 sorry, Leicestershire County Council potentially goes into special measures. The government comes in and starts taking a look, saying, right, what went on here? And oh, I'm sure Nigel Farage is going to be really pleased when Dan Harrison is embarrassing him all over the media. How long will he remain leader then?
Move this forward. And when we get this change, it will be beneficial to the people of Leicestershire. They're looking at more debt. I'm saying, right, let's go about this properly. Let's look how we can stop this. How can we create a proper business model? How do we get efficiency to save money that they would only dream of? So that's where we are. I'm not moving from that because that's the real thing to do.
How can we get efficiencies, savings that they can only dream of? This guy, as I keep on saying, he is betting his entire, entire basket of eggs. He's betting his entire basket. He and that audit that he is doing out, which is only going to have three weeks to do an entire audit of the council, is somehow going to find these massive treasure hoards that have been like squirreled away by the Conservatives for years. He goes, aha, here is all the treasure or here is all the waste. It's not going to come back the way he wants. I can guarantee you that now. It is not going to come back the way it wants. And when it doesn't, he's going to be in a world of trouble. There's going to be an absolute world of trouble.
Do. It's real. It's different to what they've done.
No, it's not. It's just terrible.
The problem with the city and ourselves, we are, I think in this next week, we should have substantial modelling to be able to share, to show the differences of where we are and how we are as a county council and what would be our best initiatives. And I stand by that. I don't know the exact limits of it. So I can't pretend now I'm betraying anything because I simply don't know. But what I do know is that at least we'll have a chance at a proper discussion to try and see if we can get, and I can get the best deal for Leicestershire. It's as simple as that. Then it will come back to this body. People have comments and.
He's got a month, less than a month to do that. Well, yeah, just a little, sorry, a little bit over a month, probably a month and a week to do that. Good luck. Good luck.
Be able to comment on all of this. It won't be my decision. I've done all the work with John and other teams of staff. We've done it. They'll be your comments. And if you throw it in the bin, you throw it in the bin. But the consequences could be frightening. So.
Wait, what? Wait, what? I'm going to come back with a plan and an idea for government, like local reform. And if you don't accept my plan, then the consequences are going to be frightening. Abdicating blame, abdicating blame on that one.
Have a say on it. It's important. And I want as many people to be involved in this as possible. Once we know what we're doing and we'll be able to say we can move forward. So that's a definite. And when I say I do things, I do it and I mean it. And I was really saddened to hear the leader, it's not chirping back, but it took me by quite surprise because staff know, I said the very next day after that scrutiny meeting, I was quite alarmed with some of the comments. I meet the staff and I've sat back and waited, awaited yesterday was the start. So better late than never. But I'm sincere in what I'm saying and I will meet with them and I will talk to them regularly. And I think it's vital part and I think a leader should communicate.
I, I ought to be a fly on that wall in that meeting. I bet that was interesting.
With all the staff, we should know what they're thinking and if they've got concerns, not just sitting in the ivory tower, which has been the way it's been done previously. But anyway, people might say they haven't, but this is a proper concept set up with team leaders meeting regularly to discuss matters with them. So all I would say is, don't lose faith yet. It isn't over. We've got to make sure we get this modelling quickly and see decisively. Remember, the modelling will also talk about the North and South. It'll look at values. There's six elements to it altogether. So it's going to be fully comprehensive on where we are, what we are and what could be done. So hopefully after next week, once I know, I'll get on with it and I'll want to meet him with the leaders quickly. We can share, decide what's happening and then move on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Pathetic. What, what, I'm sorry, what an absolute pathetic response. Bluff and bluster is how I would characterize that response. If you live in Leicestershire and you are governed by Leicestershire County Council, I will be very worried about what's going to happen to your council in the next couple of months. Very worried indeed.
Mr. Harrison, okay, we're still on agenda item number six, receiving position statements. So now we're going to move on to the lead member for adults and communities. I now invite the lead member, Mr. Abbott, for adults and communities to make a statement, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd just like to read you this statement. Obviously, as you may be aware, the Care Quality Commission has recently published an assessment on how the council carries out its responsibilities under the CARE Act 2015. The assessment took place between September.
You can see Brom in the background there because this would have been his job. He is clearly not happy.
2024 and February 2025, the Care Quality Commission has rated the council as requires improvement. While this is disappointing with that outcome, it provides us with a clear roadmap of change and an opportunity to strengthen the services for the people of Leicestershire and to outline the strategic and operational actions we are taking to address the areas for improvement. We acknowledge the delays in assessments. Some people have waited far, far too long. Feedback has shown that navigating our services, especially online, can be very difficult for certain people, particular for unpaid carers and those facing digital exclusion. We've seen usable usability issues and are safeguarding portal and concerns with data recording and reporting. The Care Quality Commission highlighted gaps in some areas of services provisions such as extra care, day services and supported living options. And there continue to be a higher turnover rates of recruitment difficulties, especially in the rural areas. Report highlights the need to ensure we reach all our communities, especially those in the rural areas of the county and work together with our partners to ensure people receive the support and are entitled to from health and social care services. Members, this is a moment for reflection, but also for action. We are committed to delivering high quality, responsive and inclusive adult care services. These strategic actions are not just reactive, they are proactive. Steps to build a stronger and more resilient system. We have already reduced the number of people waiting for assessments by, well, now 250 and we are committed. And we are committed to removing the backlog of assessments for care and support. We have recruited additional staff to support these officers on a temporary basis and demand on the services and will be working together to ensure we have the right capacity in the service going forward. We are reviewing our website as well with input from people who draw on support, increasing the use of printed materials for those who prefer information in that format whilst also expanding digital inclusion initiatives. Working across the council, we are seeking to expand the development of extra care housing and supportive living.
I'm just looking at the, uh, the, the agenda meeting here and I'm just wondering what's going to be going on because now we're on, obviously. Uh, hang on, let me show you this tab instead. There we are. So we are on agenda item six. So this is the position statement from Mr. Abbott. We've then got Pugsley, the, the, the eighteen year old in charge of child services. I've, I've strange feeling his, uh, position statement might be quite interesting. Um. And then the constitution committee about trying to revise the constitution. And then I don't really care about the notice for motion. Um, that probably not could be, I think, too interesting to, to watch. Uh, to watch. I think we've probably seen the fireworks already, uh, but I'd be interested to see what happens when Pugsley stands up. Uh, he might be quite interesting to watch, see what he says. Uh, get on to that. Ah, there is.
Tape. We all know there's loads of red tape. People have to jump through hoops. And if we can cut some of that process out, um, it's going to save us.
Okay, member for children and family services, uh, I now invite the lead member, children and family services to make a statement, please. Mr. Pugsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As members will be aware, Leicestershire currently has eight thousand one hundred and sixty four active EHCPs, which is an increase of fifty four percent from twenty twenty and a hundred and fifty eight percent since the introduction of the send reforms in twenty sixteen. Since January twenty twenty five, the department has received one thousand three hundred and five requests for an EHCP needs assessment, a twenty percent increase from previous levels. The significant increase reflects the uncertainty over the, over the upcoming school's white paper. It is expected to make changes to the way in which send provisions is delivered in local areas. While we welcome the direction of travel to ensure more children can have their additional needs met in local mainstream schools and support across the system to increase inclusion in schools, the financial challenges impacting Leicestershire as a result of this increased demand are significant. High needs block funding has not kept pace with the increasing request for assessment on the subsequent, on the subsequent issuing of the HCP plans to support children and young people send. A national increase in EHCPs by a hundred and twenty five percent against an increase in high needs funding of fifty nine percent is leaving Leicestershire with a, with a projected high needs deficit of a hundred and eighteen million pounds by twenty twenty eight to twenty nine.
So basically lying out the send crisis that most councils are in.
Result of hard work across the department, EHCP needs assessments are now being processed in an average of twenty four weeks, a significant improvement compared to this time last year when figures were close to sixty weeks on average. The department is also exploring the use of technology to, to support improved processes and more efficient delivery in order to focus more time on supporting children and families with send. I'd like to express my thanks to staff within the department for their hard work and tenacity over the last year to secure these improvements and work towards getting it right for children and young people with additional needs. I'll move on to children and care, Mr. Chairman. Over the last five years, the department has been working with Bernardo's to open residential homes for our children in care. There are now six homes out of them, out of the eight planned, um, that are now opened across Leicestershire. The remaining two homes will be open before December this year. These homes are providing support for our most vulnerable children in care through one home supporting children who have been exploited, or home supporting children trauma that have led to emotional and behavioural needs, one parent and child assessment home and one high need emergency assessment home. The two further homes will support children with mental health needs and overnight short breaks. The opening of a ninth home is being considered with an option disposal currently in development. Building our own homes for children in care not only means we're providing care that meets our children's needs, but it's projected to save us two million pounds over the next four years. In other news, the application window for first time admissions into primary schools and for transfers to secondary schools is now open. Whilst we have over ninety five percent of primary and ninety two percent of secondary places allocated to first preferences, parents and carers are encouraged to ensure they select five choices in order to ensure that they, that they secure a place at school local to them. I'm also pleased to share that ninety three percent of our primary schools and over eighty eight percent of secondary schools are rated good or outstanding by Ofsted for leadership and management. By way of reminder, Mr. Chairman, for parents and carers, the admissions round for twenty twenty six is now open and the secondary transfer application deadline is thirty first of October and for primary is fifteenth of January next year. In relation to Leicestershire music, I'm delighted that engagement with primary, secondary and special schools remains above the national average at ninety three percent accessing one or more Leicestershire music services. Over eighteen thousand children and young people learnt with this service last year, with twenty percent of them being from disadvantaged backgrounds. And I'll speak about the family first partnership programme, Mr. Chairman. So this programme is a delivery mechanism for the government's reforms of children's social care services. It has a particular focus on multi-agency safeguarding arrangements and integrated delivery of targeted early help, ensuring families in their networks are at the centre of finding solutions to keep children safe at home. The programme is currently working on three pillars, family help, family networks and multi-agency child protection teams. Family help builds on work already started to bring together our target, our targeted early help services with dedicated children in need teams of social workers, ensuring that we have a strong response for families who need help. Family networks is focused on how we can draw together the wider support of extended families and friends to support sustainable change and to help children stay safe at home. Multi-agency child protection teams are considering how best we work with our statutory partners of health, police and education to ensure timely and efficient decision making, investigations and review cases. The children and family services department has made, has made a strong start to the programme with excellent engagement across the partnership. This includes a seconding in of a police officer and health professional with input from educational staff to help build on existing multi-agency arrangements for the protection of children and risk of harm. I'm pleased to present this position statement. My first position statement is lead member of children's services, Mr. Chairman, to share the positive work of the department and to highlight some of the areas of concern across children and family services and how both I and the department are working to tackle these. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr.
So, again, standard, you know, statement about what's going on in Leicester. Again, I can't really say too much because, again, I don't really know too much about what's going on uh, in some of these, you know, more detailed sort of sectors and areas. It's almost impossible to keep full control of what's going on. But he did point out, of course, the big problems with send and, you know, what's going on. Every single council is going to be facing this. But as usual, what's he doing about it? And what's he doing about some of that stuff? And as Vince points out, those Ofsted ratings have all not been since May. Hmm. What a surprise. Once again, reform taking credit for things that weren't done under their administration.
I'm seeing.
Let's see what the response is.
Oh, sorry, Charlesworth.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just a quick word on children in care, really. We have discussed this at Children's and Families before. But since then, the ONS have released a report on children in care. It doesn't make good reading. I'm pleased to see that we're going with Bernardo's and building homes. I think that's the way forward. There are too many unregulated providers who are merely profiteers trying to make money out of this system. We've got children's home popping up everywhere with untrained staff, unregistered providers. And the disappointing thing for me is this council is placing our children in homes without planning permission to be a children's home. That's now been trying to be rectified, but it should never happen in the first place. I urge everybody and I'll ask the director to circulate that report. It's important reading because it shows the way ahead. And at the moment, this council, it's working on it, but we're far from where we need to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Charlesworth. Uh, Mr. Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to congratulate both the lead members for adults and for children's on their first position statements. Really interesting reading. Um, it sometimes gets lost in the political bluster of we're trying to bring you guys down. That is not the case at all. Every single member in this chamber wants the best for Leicestershire. We're not attacking you. We are helping and wanting the very best for our Leicestershire residents, particularly our most vulnerable. Which if you think about the two departments that have just spoken, that's two thirds of the entire council budget and it's likely to go up even more. So what I would urge is both the lead members, you know, you've got a leader there who has had offer of help and has point blankly refused to take it. But I'm reaching out to both of them, all the lead members. Use the experience on this side of the room and members of the.
Yeah, come to us, come speak to us because we know what went, we know what they're doing. Take the advice, Pugsley, take the advice. Go speak to Deborah Taylor, who was in charge, I believe, before.
This outside as well. We are here to help you. The children and families department, you have some incredible experience over this side. You have a lead member that took it from requires improvement to outstanding in a few years. You've got two former cabinet support members over this side. You've got some team members on across the side of this, uh, chamber that have helped in the scrutiny commission. We know the department inside out. We are here to help you to get the very, very best for our children in care. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, because you don't put an eighteen year old in charge with absolutely zero experience and then your leader give absolutely zero help when no one in his own party can even offer any help because they've done anything, anything like that at all. Take his advice, Pugsley. Go speak to people across from the aisle. You, you may not like what they have to say, but they're probably going to know a lot more in the ins and outs than he do. Will he take that advice? I don't think so.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to say that was well read, Mr. Pugsley, um, and, and all of that. But, um, one of the things you didn't talk about, uh, you did mention about the, uh, uh, large increase in, uh, uh, requests for EHCPs in the last year. But the reason for that is unfortunately because of the, uh, Labour government, uh, last year made a lot of noise about changing the SEND system. And actually, a lot of parents and carers of children then panicked because they thought, hang on a minute, if we don't get an EHCP in place, we'll never get now, we'll never get one. So all of a sudden, there was a massive surge in applications. That's what we've experienced because I was at a LGA meeting recently and they said that nationally the increase is about ten percent. So Leicestershire's had a much bigger increase than the rest of the country on average. And so I think, you know, we need to understand that, which you haven't explained. But part of the explanation, as I understand, is the government talking about changing the system and parents and schools, because schools get additional funding to support those young people, uh, in, through their education, uh, uh, trajectory. So that's, that's something that you didn't, you didn't talk about. Um, but, I mean, the, the problem with SENDD funding, of course, is it's a bit like Hogwarts. It's, um, it's very, it's magical and mostly fictional. And that's the problem. And unfortunately, you and I, us here, we don't control the funding. The funding comes from the treasury and at the moment they don't fully fund, uh, the, uh, SEND high needs block in full. And so we have a huge deficit hanging over us. A bit, it's a bit like, um, I'm trying to think, but what the right expression is, but I can't think of it at the moment. But so we have a, you know, like a, an axe hanging over us.
Sword of Damocles.
And, uh, you know, like, like all other local authorities, upper tier and unitaries that deal with children and, uh, adult, adult care. Uh, we've got this, uh, financial chopper basically hanging over us, which the government can impose at any time. And the problem is, and I go back to the, uh, the, the comments that were made earlier about LGR, this is absolutely critical to get this right in LGR. Because if you split up adult social care and children's services into two or three or however many services it is, and you have to give off, you have to give away large parts of the council tax and business rates base of, of Leicestershire to the city, for example. So we lose a lot of revenue and we've then got all the high needs still. We're going to be even worse in the, in the mess than we currently are. So it's really, really important and this is really crucial. And that's why it's so frustrating and annoying that the leader still hasn't brought forward any information and detail that we can scrutinise about what's actually being proposed. Because until we can do that, we have no idea what's being talked about is actually a good thing or could actually get even worse depending on what's put forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. King. Mr. Martin, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you to the lead member for his position statement. He's clearly been working very hard over the last few months. It's also great to hear that over eighteen thousand children and young people have engaged with Leicestershire music services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Nice and quick statement. That's what we like to see sometimes.
Right, Mr. Tilbury.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Lead Member, for your position statement. Um, I welcome the direction of travel around more children having their needs met in a local mainstream school. But I remain concerned about the fact that funding we get is not kept up with the demand. What else do we need to highlight this issue and get the right resource to support children with additional needs? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tilbury.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, one of the things that I'd like to say firstly, thank you very much for that position statement. Um, that was very comprehensive. And as a member of that committee, the scrutiny committee, a number of the issues that, um, I'm concerned about did come up in that last scrutiny meeting. And one of the things that's missing, I think, from our approach here, as we're being forced to build more and more homes, there's more speculative building proposals coming through, the price of that needs to be the section one oh six money. That if we're going to be forced to do something, then the facilities, both for schools, for SEND and for adult social services needs to be thought about. There needs to be new strategic arrangement. And I'd like the council to look at that for the, for the leaders, for the leader and the leaders of the various groups to look at how we can actually get more from section one oh six money. That to me is, uh, an opportunity for us to close some of the gap in funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, um, just wanted to address the point that Mr. Page just made. I completely agree. Uh, we do need to make sure that the developers are paying their fair share, uh, to mitigate the effects that their developments have on the local communities. And I think children's services is probably one of the biggest, uh, that has impacted from that. Uh, what I will say is we are currently working on things outside of the section one oh six, the SILLS that we are trying to push through. Um, particularly in Charmwood at the moment, that's the one that's currently in progress. So we'll just have to wait and see how successful that ends up being. In my district as well, I'd like to do that with, with Harbour District Council and with Belaby. So that would be a good way to address it. But so I just want to agree basically, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Okay, now allow the opposition group leaders to speak and won't be taking any more speakers. Uh, Mr. Meyer, please.
Cheers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I welcome the admissions to that school and the improvements. It's fantastic to have, you know, over ninety percent of all our schools outstanding or, or, um, good, as they say. Um, well done on consultation for Bernardo's, um, children's care home. Uh, that was a very good foresight and I think that's the way to go. And I think somebody mentioned, Mr. Charles has mentioned it about, um, uh, care homes dotted around in mainly terraced or, or seventy six houses. Um, and, uh, with that, with planning permission or without. Um, but yeah, it's just one of those where I think that's, if that's the model and it's working, we should carry on rolling it out and, and hopefully people, uh, children are in a secure environment. Um, send, yeah, that's the biggest one, isn't it? You know, it's, it's, well, a hundred and eighteen million here, is it all? Um, and it's considerable amount of money that's off the books, as they say, um, but we have to provide it. Um, and it's not a new thing. It's not a Labour government thing. It's, 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 it's a treasury thing. I don't want to blame the Conservatives. Um, but it is a treasury thing, you know, they need to provide the money for us then to be able to provide services. Um, and it doesn't matter if you, we press the Labour government for it or a Conservative government or any other government, we still should be pressing.
I'm going to fast forward Deborah, see what she's going to say.
The improvement in the service because it.
Are under legislation and morally and socially obliged to give them that support. So it's not that we're choosing to overspend. We're under the legislations that this government, last government, whatever, has put forward and not provided the funding to actually implement that legislation. So I just want to put that out there to start with. And I think that the noise coming out from government at the moment about the reform changes will have affected families. And I think as a council, we need to go out there and reassure families that whatever the changes in the legislation, that their children and will be, families will be supported by this council and that we will do everything we can to support them. So I think that message is not getting out there from this council and that's something the lead member, I think.
Oh, absolutely no love lost on that, Aaron. That's very true.
With the increase in EHCPs, there's been lots of noise around there. But for me, and this has been my mantra for many, many years, is that mainstream schools need to be properly funded to support the cohort of children that we now have. Whether they've got special education needs, ADHD, autism, whatever they are, mainstream schools are not funded properly to be able to support the needs of that children. And that's what we need to be pushing for. So I hope the lead member takes that back and keeps banging the drum of a national government to make sure that mainstream schools, we are one of the lowest funded per pupil here in Leicestershire. And that doesn't give our teachers the ability to look after all the children they need to and whatever, um, special needs that they have in mainstream school that can be supported there. So um, really good to see the weeks coming down. That was my work that I started. So it's good to see that the, um, the lead member has carried on with that work that I have.
Yeah, once again, carry on with work that the Conservatives are already doing, you know. Um, in, in that way, maybe in that respect, it's probably quite good that he is.
And, um, it's having that impact that we wanted, first of all. Um, Bernardo, thank you, Councilman Mee, for the credit for that. It, this was my baby. This was my project. I put my heart and soul into this. There was many bumps in the road, many obstacles, but I worked through there. And I think we have some delivered some brilliant provision, not only made savings, but looked after our children much better in those Bernardo's home that we would have been putting them to places like Mr. Charlesworth has said there. I think just addressing that, um, we, if at all possible, would never put a child into a, a home that wasn't regulated. What the planning permission was something that we wouldn't have done. And I have addressed this before, but I think there is an issue there of districts and it's a district and borough of not keeping an eye on what's happening and care homes are propping up without having the change of use. So I think there is an issue, but it's borough and districts. And we wouldn't actually look into the planning permission when we place a child. We would just see if it was registered. So, but I agree, that is an issue there. Um, on to the music service. Fantastic. Um, that we are the Leicestershire Music Hub here and we deliver for all children across Leicester and Leicestershire. And, um, it's a great service and the lead member will get invited to the multiple concerts that they have. And I hope he does go along because it does mean a lot to the staff when the lead member does turn up and supports them with those, um, concerts. So I hope he does do that. The family first programme again, this was something that I put into place and it's really good to see that, that, that's now embedding in the department and we're starting to see the fruits of that labour delivering for all our, all our children and families. And what's missing across all of this, that's not being mentioned, but our children's services here are rated outstanding and we should always celebrate that, that we are delivering great services for our children and families in this council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Okay, Mr. Pugsley, would you like to respond, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll start with, um, you, Mr. Charlesworth, and first just to everyone, thank you for, um, the support and the comments, um, around my age. I think as many of you said today, um, I should be judged on my reputation and the things that I bring to the role rather than just looking directly at my age. I think, Mr. Charlesworth, in, in response to your question, Bernardo's are excellent. Um, they're one of the rare ones that we work with where they're nonprofit and we actually own the building. So that's really good there. Um, I share the concerns that you mentioned and I'm more than happy to pick them up with the outside of here to see how we can progress them. Um. Just struggling to read my writing. Um, Mr. Rodkin, we'll go on to, so the music service. Um, as my position statement showed, the children and family services department at the moment has a lot of turmoil, a lot of people are concerned about a lot of what they're hearing around funding. So I think in terms of Leicestershire music and with the admissions system, I think having these really good stories out to show some of the really positive things. to show some of the really positive things that we are still delivering despite some of these financial difficulties is really, really important.
Mr. Pugsley, could you just address the chair, please?
Of course, sorry, Mr. Chairman. In terms of, um, issues around section one oh six funding, it is something, again, that I'm aware of and Mr. Fowler beat me to do it, addressing that. But again, happy to pick that up outside of here. In terms of issues with send, mentioned by a couple of members here today. And one thing that I promise-
I'm just going to skip around to see more, uh, shall we say fun stuff?
Across Leicestershire. Um, while it might not be considered as one of the priority flooding areas, there is flooding in my division of Market Bosworth. Uh, I'll tell you one story, for example, from a little while ago, but nonetheless, I think it speaks of the, uh, the impact that flooding has on the lives of individuals. Uh, Christmas morning nineteen ninety eight, families in the-
We took, uh, control of the council. He, um, spent a nice sunny day in Melton, so we didn't quite see the, the effects of flooding. But we, we managed to, um, talk to, uh, most of the local players in Melton about the challenges that they face on the River I and, and also in the town. Um, and also to follow up with that, the, uh, I understand Mr. Tilbury also managed to have a meeting with the Borough Council representative. Uh, and lost, actually, I have one resident who I went to visit a couple of weeks of the age of this, you know, and this.
I'm interested because I can see King speaking again. And to be honest, done the best out, him and Deborah, they've done a fantastic job.
Meeting with the Great Glen, Great Glen Flood Committee and I come to speak to them. That was very, uh, supportive of him to do that because as colleagues might know, Great Glen has actually flooded twice in consecutive years, uh, some of the same homeowner, homeowners only just got in the week before they got flooded in January and they got flooded out again, so they're now out for another year. I can't even imagine the distress that causes someone when that happens. But just coming back to this two million pounds, whilst I welcome that and do appreciate, uh, the, the, uh, you know, prizing that out of reserves and, and saying we're going to spend it. Two million pounds spread across Leicestershire over a period of time is a metaphorical drop in the ocean. And, you know, where's, where, and, and, and I just think that expectations are being raised here that longer term are not going to necessarily be deliverable. And I'm just concerned, given the leader's statement earlier about, um, the financial, uh, challenge that the council faces, where are additional funds, uh, for this area going to come from without impacting on other services, particularly adult social care and children, children's, which we just, uh, talked about earlier. So that's the concern I have. And then the other concern I have, and I listen very carefully. So yes, I'm a welcome additional drop in sessions, but are there going to be any additional drop in sessions in Great Glen or for that matter in Market Harbour, which has also experienced flooding recently? And, um, that, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for the report. To me, flooding is not just simply one issue. It is amalgamation of a lot of issues. And I think we have to recognise all of those issues in order to try to find a solution. To me, there will be no solution.
The scrutiny committee meeting.
Okay, so back to, to Mr. King. All those speakers, Mr. King. Sorry, Mrs. Taylor, I think I need a coffee.
Thank you. Um, yeah, just to add, there was two options put before the, the Constitution Committee that I sit on with the leader and also Mr. Mulaney. Um, the leader still wanted to remove the name climate change from the, um, overview and scrutiny group, but we all, um, advised him, obviously, that wasn't the decision of this council that they wanted climate change to remain in there. So, um-
All right, trying to change, no boards, officers, et cetera, still wasting time.
Thank you.
But I think we're coming, I think we've seen, I think we've seen the best stuff of this, of this council meeting, but there you go. Um, honestly, still as always, um, if you are a resident of Leicester, of Leicestershire, sorry, um, good luck. Who knows? You might somehow get lucky and maybe even be absorbed by Leicester City. You might get lucky and you might be saved from them, at least maybe for the time being. Who knows? But as always, um, crazy stuff as always. There is the, um, Warrington Scrutiny Committee meeting that I also want to watch as well at some point. Uh, I changed, like I say, to Leicestershire, um, because, well, it was literally today, it was fresh. And the fact that, once again, Harrison got an absolute, um, absolute mauling on that one. So I hope you've all enjoyed this. I hope you've again learned something about, you know, local councils and et cetera. As always, I hope that has been in somewhat, you know, in, you know, educational for you as well as, you know, getting to laugh along at how terrible reform are. But as always, thank you very much for everyone for watching. Thank you very much, person impersonated, because I was about to say that. Please do remember to, of course, click on, uh, the likes, share. And of course, if you are new, hit the subscribe button as well. Don't forget to hit the bell button as well. So next time we go live or we drop a new video, you'll get the notification for it. So as always, thank you very much, uh, always for that. Down below, there are links to help support the channel, the Patreon page, the buy me a coffee link, the YouTube thank you button and of course the YouTube membership button, uh, as well. It is Wednesday, so if you are a member of the YouTube, uh, members, uh, channel or you are part of the Patreon, you will have a new video out today for you to watch, as well as all the other past videos that we've done as well. So thank you very much to all those people as well. And as always, we'll see you all next time. Who knows what we'll be covering next time? It might be the scrutiny committee, I don't know, we'll see. I've got to find time because I am off this weekend up to Aberdeen. So there will be no, uh, well, there might be, depends if I can do one or not up in Aberdeen, up in Scotland for a good morning walk on Saturday, we'll see. So as always, thank you very much for watching and of course, as always, and go and enjoy the rest of your week and we'll see you all next time.